Yeah, and then they turn up there, they make a left on South and go over to Bennett and then around. It's really crazy.
I have a question for you.
Yeah, I guess that probably gotta change.
Is it possible to do like any gardening?
But we can feel them coming before we ever see them.
They're not gonna ever know.
Maybe.
That's all it's for, it's just a garden.
Yeah. So, who knows? Oh. Brenda? Brenda, you got 30 seconds. Just don't wanna catch you off-guard.
Please rise and join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Good evening, thank you all for coming. We'll start, council, with, well, I guess I should mention, staff is all present. Council is present with the exception of Councilmember Judith Dunley, who is recovering from a fall. So I would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Dunley's absence.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Judith Dunley tonight.
Second.
A motion was made by Councilmember Kinzer and seconded by Councilmember Carnegie to excuse Councilmember Judith Dunley's absence. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And it carries. Thank you, council. Agenda item three is the consent calendar. Tonight we have items A through G, and council, you know the drill.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve items A through G on our agenda tonight.
I have a motion from Councilmember Johnson, second from Councilmember Allen, to approve the consent agenda A through G. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And it carries. Thank you very much. Now, we have a fun thing. Special recognition for employees, and I'm gonna come down in front as quickly as I can. So we have three awards tonight, as you can see, and they're very significant awards because the baby of the group has been serving the city of Cedar Valley for 30 years. So two of these awards are for 35 years, and I don't see any 70-year-olds out there, so that means you've spent more than half your life serving the city of Cedar Valley. The reason I think this is really important, people see your loyalty, and you have the corporate knowledge and the leadership skills that make you the conduit to the past and the future, and you connect it and you bring people up, and you're gonna keep this city running for a lot longer than after you retire because of what you do today. So first, I'd like to call up David Davidson. Come on up, David. David's in our streets department. His award is for 30 years, and I won't read the whole thing, but I just wanna read the personal part that says, "Cedar Valley has safer streets and better sidewalks thanks to you," and that is for sure and certain. Now, I want David to stay here for me for a bit. It was a close race for first place here. Debbie, you have second place, I'm afraid, by 16 days, I think. So come on up, get your award. Debbie Allen, from our wastewater treatment plant, award-winning, I might add. The city is truly fortunate to have benefited from your 35 years of service. Cedar Valley and everyone downriver has cleaner water thanks to you. And our big winner tonight is Teresa Johnson from our library. 35 years, our longest-serving employee, and this says, "The city has benefited from your 35 years of service, and the people of Cedar Valley are more informed and well-read thanks to you." There's truth in that.
Congratulations. If you guys don't mind, I'll get a picture of all three of you together. And if family members wanna come up and get a picture, that's appropriate, or if you wanna take a picture, that's appropriate. Don't be shy. Okay? Well, this is the best part of being mayor, because what I do best is pay credit for other people's hard work. Thank you very much.
And council, did you have any comments? Did I do it right? Thanks.
Thank you guys for your service.
Yes. So this brings us, and awardees, you don't have to suffer through the rest of this unless you just enjoy being here, so don't feel bad if you wanna go, we understand. Now is the public comment period. If we have any takers for public comment, please keep your comments to three minutes. State your name and your address for the record, and remember that you're addressing the council and not each other, and not engaging in question and answer or cross-examination. So, I'll now open the public comment period. Any takers? Yes, sir.
Roger Hinchin, Heather Lane.
Can I have you come to the mic, please?
Yes.
It's all recorded here.
Roger Hinchin, I'm Heather Lane, and I'm fairly new in the city, and I'd like to tell you how your crew and employees are so great. Friendly, helpful, and it's just wonderful to be here.
I appreciate that, Roger. Can you give me your house number, please, for the record? Your house number on Heather Lane? Or not? Okay. Very good. Thank you for coming, Roger. Any other takers for our public comment period this evening? Very well, at this time, I'll close the public comment hearing, period, and we'll move on. Item six, council, on your packets, page 60 to 63, is a proposed ordinance for adding a new section to the municipal code 10.44 regarding no parking zones on Hodgins Street. Oh, this is a first reading. Excuse me. So who has this one? Enforcement, or... No? Lynn's shaking his head, passing the buck.
I can do it, mayor.
Okay. Mark, can you speak into that mic? That one always gives us trouble.
Yes, that better?
Yes, thank you.
So during baseball games on Hodgins Road, the street tends to be blocked due to the fact that people park on both sides of the road in the vicinity of the little bridge that crosses to the fields, and so we were requested to look at doing no parking on one of the sides of the street so we could keep it clear for emergency vehicles, and also there was a problem with people walking between vehicles and not having any sight distance for oncoming vehicles, causing a safety hazard for the pedestrians. So the proposal is to make the south and the east side the curb side, no parking. That would define that, that would allow at least a 20-foot clear zone for folks to go both directions with traffic, and it would still allow for parking on the north and the west side. There is sufficient parking up in the other lot. Folks just wanna park as close as they can, of course, but they do have that option. Eventually, the school district is planning to partner with the city to build another lot off of Hodgins, but that's not in the cards for this year. Anyway, that's the proposal, is to parking on the curb side on the south and the east sides of Hodgins.
Thank you, Mark. And for council, there's a map and an aerial view on page 63 that makes it pretty clear.
So did I understand correctly that emergency vehicles would not be able to pass if vehicles are parking on both sides of the street? Is that correct?
We've had issues with that, as I understand it. Lynn could address that better than I think.
When they're parked on one side or the other, there's no problem. When they're on both sides, we've got that choke right there at the corner, and people are sitting in their cars, and kids are going back and forth. It hasn't delayed us in anything, you know, that we know of, but there's no reason to park there. They park up on the curb, they pull into areas that they're not supposed to. We keep them on the one side, or go park in the actual parking lot would be best.
So if we did this, we're gonna get signs out there before we do enforcement, I hope?
Yes, the ordinance, if it's passed, is effective June the 1st, and we'll put them up before June 1st.
And like I said before, we're not gonna take the United Airlines approach to enforcement. We're just gonna go in a little bit easier first and let people know, and then pull the United Airlines on 'em.
Very good. Any questions, council?
Yeah, I have a question. Has it been considered a distance that people are gonna have to walk with their children if they're not allowed to park there? Because, I don't know, on a busy night on the ballfield, the front parking lot off of Cook Road is full, and there's really nowhere else to go but other than to park on Hodgins Road. And I'm just concerned people walking with their kids a longer distance because there's nowhere to park is gonna be possible.
There's actually a secondary parking lot just north of the new ballfield that the city has put the base on, that is usable right now. The school district had committed to furnishing Top Rock to finish that a little better, but it is usable right now.
Are people using it yet?
Nobody's using it. So, and we've talked to the school district about this, and they were to encourage their players, who are part of the folks that are parking down there, and the families, to park in the parking lots. I haven't been by recently, Jim's still here. Has anybody been parking down in there, Jim?
A few.
A few.
I think six drivers.
Right. So it's as much an educational thing as anything else, and the school district is aware of this, and I'll reach out to them again if you move forward with this tomorrow and make sure they're aware, and they're telling people that this is coming up.
So is the capacity on the parking lot that's underutilized right now roughly equivalent to what's being used on the street?
Oh, yes. You can park at least 50 cars in there.
Okay. So there's a safe place to park and a not-safe place to park. Any other questions for council?
He's owned that lot there.
I believe that's part of the RJ LLC.
There's talk of some progress going in there, so they wouldn't wanna offer some of that for some temporary parking for things, or...
They're actually working on submitting plans for construction, so actually, no parking along that stretch would probably help and make a lot of sense during the construction in that area, because that would be phase one of any development in the properties, that northern section of the old Safeway site.
And before they barricaded it off with, you know, all the ecology blocks and cables, they got into trouble from ecology due to the yahoos four-wheeling through there and tracking all the mud into the stormwater system. So, you know, otherwise, that would just be an open site, but it didn't work out having that open to public access.
A few rotten apples in the barrel.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. And it looks like we're moving on to item seven.
Actually, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't see any reason why we can't move forward with this. I realize it's a first read, and we do like to do two readings before we take a vote, but this seems pretty straightforward, and I make a motion that we vote on it tonight.
Okay. If you're making that motion, the next ordinance is 1877-TAC-17.
I move that we go ahead and move to vote on 1877-17. Is that right? Did I get that right? Tonight, foregoing the second reading tonight?
Okay. Do I hear a second? Okay. Motion was made by Councilmember Carnegie to approve ordinance 1877.17, an ordinance adding new sections to the Cedar Valley Municipal Code 10.44 regarding no parking zones on Hodgins, and that was seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And it carries. Thank you, council. So now, moving on to item seven, reports, Chief Tucker.
All right, so just to let everybody know, we got Joanna back from maternity leave on May 2nd. She said she's happy to escape baby duty, but was happy to be home with baby at the time, but she's kinda glad to be back to work, and we're really glad to have her back. This month, we're focusing on a lot of active shooter and active threat training with all the schools in the school district. School district has hired a consulting firm, Krista Salinas, to put together plans, and we've been working with the school, doing tabletop exercises, a pretty low-key stuff, where we sit around for about an hour, hour and a half, and go over scenarios that she's come up with, and everybody gets to, I guess, plug in their response to what we would do. Dean and I have been going to these and taking various other people with us, just to get them experienced with working with the school staff, which is really the big thing for us right now, is getting tied in and getting the school staff to understand what could happen in the event of a tragedy, and what's going to happen, and then how we all integrate together. We have such an outstanding working relationship with the school district that this is the norm in working with them, but a lot of the teachers have no concept of what we're doing and what we're talking about, and the school is bringing them kinda into the fold and getting them, I guess, acclimated to what to do in an emergency. Cedar Valley School District, I think, is quite a bit ahead of the curve on a lot of things. Security-wise, they've all got the lockdown buttons now. We've got the key fobs that all of our officers can access all of the schools in the Cedar Valley School District, from Lyman, Samish, all of Cedar Valley down to Clear Lake and Big Lake. And we're working, the sheriff's office is working with Chuck Griffith out at the school district to get key fobs for themselves so they can do the same thing, so we can give an outstanding response to any threat that happens if the schools in lockdown or lockout. We had a tabletop exercise with Central Elementary this morning, and then Dean and I talked to the various fire chiefs from the west end of the county about some of the things that we're doing here that they're kinda wanting to integrate into. So this is kinda picking up steam. All of our officers are trained in active shooters. It's kind of a cooperative effort throughout the county, and this is our big issue this summer, it's gonna be completed. I think we have a big exercise Monday evening, right? Monday evening, integrating with officers and the fire department, working together, which is really kind of a weird concept, of the cops and the police all working together, or the police and the fire all working together and doing this kind of thing. And the last thing, our problem property that we've been having issues with in North Reed Street, sold at auction here last week. So we kind of expect that to kinda wither away when the folks finally all leave that place, but we should see an improvement for the neighborhood in there with those folks leaving. And a lot of that work was done by Laura Carr, our code enforcement officer, pressing issues that are kind of health hazards in that property, and finally got it settled, so we got a kind of a good resolution there. That's all I have.
Thanks, chief. Council, any questions? Chief Klinger.
Along the same lines as the active shooter stuff, it was kinda neat here, what, two Mondays ago, we had this room completely packed with people. There's, we guess, probably about anywhere from 60 to 75 firefighters and police officers in here, going through some of that training for those drills that are coming up, so it was really neat to see everybody in here working together. So it should be, I don't wanna call them fun drills, they'll be informative, we'll learn a lot in case we ever have to, and hopefully we never will. We did get a chance to pay back the city of Mount Vernon for the use of the ladder truck at our fire. I don't know, Aaron just told me it's on our Facebook page now, but they had an incident in Mount Vernon last night, about 5:30 or so, where somebody was stuck in a tree, they were injured, and they called McLean Road Fire, who had their aerials that couldn't reach them, called Mount Vernon Fire. Their ladder truck was broken for another week. They called Anacortes, their ladder truck's gonna be broken for about two to three weeks. Called Burlington, they won't have one for quite some time yet. There's a still broken from the fire over Mount Vernon last year, so they finally got down to the list, and as much as they hated it, they had to call Woolley to come rescue them again. So we took our ladder truck over, got the gentleman down from the tree so he could get to the hospital, but it's a great picture. If you get a chance, go to the city's Facebook page and take a look at it, it's pretty neat. I like that. It's a good contrast with the clouds, so...
Yeah, and that wasn't just a tree, that was a tree. That was way up there.
Big poplar, yeah. We were out the full 109 feet on it, so...
Anything else, Dean?
No, it's in there.
John?
Along with our usual land use and building review, we had heard that the city of, the town of Hamilton is in the market for somebody to do their building plan review and building inspections, so we're gonna start a conversation with them, see if we can offer those services, and just kinda figure out some of the details, and if it works out, we'd be entering into an interlocal agreement between the two cities where we would provide the services, mostly Tony doing the plan review for any buildings that happen in the city, which is fairly, is not a lot of building residential, so there shouldn't be too much effort on our part, but they do have a Jeniki facility there, so they'll need somebody with expertise, such as Tony, if any large permits were to be submitted for that facility. So we thought we'd help out the neighbors and see if, you know, it might benefit the city of Cedar Valley in some ways also. So we're gonna be starting that conversation over the next week or so, and we'll keep you tuned on whether or not we enter, if we wanna enter an agreement with them.
Okay. Thank you, John. Mark?
Thank you, mayor. A few things. The SR9 Jamison project was completed today. Contractor replaced a few panels of guardrail that were not the right kind. We're having a final inspection with DOT on Monday, just to make sure there aren't any other issues we have before we close that project out, but that one is done, as far as we know. We have the pre-construction conference for the SR20 Cascade Trail West Extension Project. That's the path that'll go from Hodgins Street to Trail Road. That work is going to start on the 22nd of May. You'll start seeing them mobilize and working on that. They'll be starting on some sanitary sewer, and then the storm drain work, and then doing the sidewalk towards the end of August. That work should all be complete early in September. Also, the grants that you've authorized Public Works to apply for over the last few weeks of the three that we submitted to Skagit Council of Governments, we were successful on the two large ones. The SR20, SR9 Township Intersection Improvements was the number-one ranked project. It was funded for roughly $750,000 in grant of an $866,000 project. That money turns green in 2021, so it's a little ways off, but it does get them on the books, and we should be able to start designing that in about two years. The other project was the SR20 Cascade Trail West Extension, Phase 2A. That'll run from Holt Camp Road to Hodgins Road, about 3,000-foot of path. That's a $501,000 grant of a $580,000 project, so it's another one that will turn green in 2021. The third one that we applied for was actually a contingency grant. If projects don't move ahead as quickly as they need to within the SCOG stable of projects that have been awarded, then they can pull projects like this one, which is a planning project that'll complement the one you approved out of TBD to do the preliminary planning for the Jones-John Leiner Trail Road project, and that was a $100,000 request. So that one will be setting on the books, and if the money is available, we will get that at some point. We also applied for the TIB Emergency Repair Program that is up to $50,000 per agency for funding pothole repair. Nathan spent quite a bit of time going around finding many of those around town. He had no difficulty finding that many, and so we should hear on that in the next month or so. We're hopeful we can pick up some of those funds and do a little more patching than we were already planning, and he already has a pretty aggressive program for chip seals and overlays for this summer. Including, I'll just mention that the Alexander Street repaved out from Township towards 11th. They're gonna start pulverizing that on the 15th, next Monday, and should have that paved by the week of 5/22nd, if the weather allows that.
Well, the pulverized part's half-done, that should go quickly.
Yes, it is. That shouldn't take much effort. And we also submitted the grant through Skagit County for Economic Development Funds for the SR20 East Lane Widening and Safety Improvements Project, and we were awarded, or preliminarily awarded, $300,000 for that project as well. Our ask was half a million, that was the maximum available, but we did in the application list some phasing for that. Basically, that puts an eight-foot concrete sidewalk, shared-use path, from Highway 9 North to Fruitdale, that's another 4,000 feet. We broke it into two phases. One would be from Township to roughly Carter Street, and then including the 840-foot footage, frontage of the North Cascades Plaza development that kinda stimulated this application. And the second section would be including that North Cascade Plaza footage, and then going 1,000 feet out to Fruitdale. The shorter one is the likely one we'll be able to fund with the funds that are available. There are some potential roadblocks on that that are still developing. One of the developers who had said they were gonna occupy the site may not now, so that one may be somewhat tenuous, but it was good news to know that the project did rank well and was funded. There was a half a million, or excuse me, $2 million available, and 300,000 of that went for salaries for the E-DAS staff, so of the 2.7, this is actually a fairly good chunk. They funded a million dollars in black fiber projects, that took up the bulk of the rest of it, so of the infrastructure projects themselves, I'm not discounting that black fiber is infrastructure, but of the hard concrete and asphalt projects, we were right there. So anyway, that's all good news for us, and will keep us busy over the next few years in addition to what we already doing. So that's all I had.
Thank you, Mark.
I've been working with our landowner downtown and talking to his crew and teams and insurance companies and law firms... companies and law firms, et cetera. At this point, the demolition contractor's been selected. They're currently demolishing the Highway 99 Bridge over there just north of Burlington. So once they complete that project, they're going to mobilize in Seidrawully, which at this point, they're hoping, anticipating will be on May 22nd. If they do mobilize on May 22nd, I believe there's a really good chance that we'll be able to have Woodworth opened or mostly opened up for blast from the past. So, you know, we've been working with that date, but our, you know, our tools are fairly limited. We have the capacity to essentially institute monetary penalties against the property owner. It's difficult to want to do that when at least every indication I've gotten is he's done everything he possibly could to get this project on track, beginning really the day of the fire. You know, he was in my office that day, and we've been in communication regularly since then. So I'd feel a lot better if they were starting, you know, last week or today or next week. But at this point, May 22nd is the targeted start date for a 10-working-day project. We'll have a conversation with them about Friday, June 2nd, and their capacity to use our right-of-way that day. Also, I've been putting a lot of time in, working with our special counsel and our bond counsel on the library partnership agreement. We have tentatively scheduled a library negotiating committee meeting for both the city and the district on Monday, May 15th, to go over the drafts of these agreements. So it's possible, depending on where we are and what comes out of that meeting, that the city council could see a first reading as early as May 24th. But we'll see. So we'll keep you posted on that. A lot of time involved in getting those documents created, and I think we've been working with a total of six attorneys, so you know how that goes. All I've got for now.
I'm sorry, Aaron. I have a question. Can you tell, can you tell something about the businesses that were next door to that that are closed? Are there any updates on those you could give?
There really aren't any updates. So that building, the Brady Building, owned by Dennis and Pat Brady, is not safe to occupy as a result of the unstable wall that's common between the two buildings. So the city red-tagged that building as unsafe for occupancy. And really, the two ways the red tag gets removed is either the wall is taken down or somebody brings a structural engineer's stamp that says it's safe to occupy. And folks I've talked to, as soon as I start saying that, they shake their head before I even get the whole sentence out. It's just not safe to be open for business. That wall, as I understand it, they have a suspicion that the, well, they know, well, they believe that the, that the north wall of the Brady Building is not a full wall. It's just bare framing, built right to the south wall of the old video store. And they believe that it's possible that the studs for the north wall of the Brady Building are in fact affixed to the south wall of the video building. So that's really the concern, is everyone saw what happened to the front of the building. This is unreinforced masonry, so there's nothing really holding it up but, but those trusses that are partially burned out and one's missing, and they're fairly high. So just having sat in on the conversation and listening to the demo contractor, talking to the structural engineer, you know, there's still significant concern about how they're going to get that wall down and not take all of it down and the building with it, the Brady Building. So 10 working days, you know, when you think of demolition, at least I think of, you know, I don't know, they're pushing the button and it goes down in a matter of moments. This is going to be a slow, careful, painstaking process to get that wall down, bring the building in on itself. They'll be pulling portions of the rubble out to allow fire investigators to have access to it. You know, it's just going to be methodical. Also, don't be alarmed, you know, you'll see them taking precautions as if it's a fully contaminated site because they are not able to get access to all portions of the building. The rules essentially require the demolition contractor to assume that everything there is asbestos and leaded and everything else. So they're going to have to maintain certain conditions. I think they'll be maintaining a wet site, and they'll have air monitoring, and they'll have appropriate personal protective equipment for the crews and well-trained leads on-site at all times. So, you know, much of it, they were able to test, you know, because anybody, well, they do have guards still out there. So I say anybody, lots of people have managed to touch a brick, but they can't get all the way in to fully understand everything that's in the pile, that there's just no access into the perimeter of the building.
Okay. Betsy? Jermaine?
I just wanted to remind folks that we have Take a Bite for Skagit. It benefits the community action, which benefits the county, including Seidrawully. That's on May 18th, and all of our, a lot of our restaurants, I wouldn't say all of them, but most of our restaurants are included in that, and they donate a portion of the proceeds to, to community action. And I wanted to also say Happy Mother's Day to all the families. That's it.
Brenda?
I've got a bunch tonight. First off, I'd like to say thanks to Chief Klinger and the Fire Department for their quick response on Saturday to the motorcycle accident. You know, I know you guys are, always are quickly and do a great job, but I got to see it, and your kind and caring treatment of the patient was really cool to see from the department and Med One, so that was interesting. Also, I'd like to talk about the corner of Wally and Nelson Streets. There's been three accidents there since December of people just taking that corner way too fast and running into fences. And there's been thousands of dollars of damage done on residential and business fences. So I've been talking to the mayor and Mark about getting a speed bump in, and it sounds like that's going to happen to slow traffic down before a student gets hurt. That's my big concern, is that a student is going to get hurt on that corner. And so this is a great first step, and I'm very thankful that, that we're going to take that step. And I did talk to residents on Wally Street and on the first block of Nelson Street, and everybody was in favor of that, except one resident who would prefer more police presence in the area and enforcing traffic rules, not only speeding, but just the way people come peeling out of the high school parking lot. And then two other residents suggested a streetlight on that corner. And I thought, well, you know, there's a streetlight on Nelson there already, but it is true that Wally is totally dark, and the two, two of the accidents that happened there did happen at night in the dark. So maybe a streetlight is worth consideration on that corner. There is a pole with a transformer. I don't know what other requirements are necessary on that pole, but maybe we can look into that.
Yeah, I did look into it. It's possible to add one there. It's about, nearest I can tell, it'll be about $4,500 to add a light with a span wire to put it in there. That's what those are running to do that. We don't have it in the budget right now, so it's something that, you know, we'd have to, Council would have to figure out how to fund, but it's possible to do that.
Okay. And then my next item is Rhodes Road. It's been brought to my attention by a resident off of Rhodes Road that, of course, as planned and predicted, the traffic has picked up quite a bit on Rhodes Road, but that traffic is not following the speed limit, and there's a lot of heavy trucks also using that road, dump trucks and log trucks. And I do drive that road on a regular basis, but I wasn't really paying attention to the sides of the road, and it's also very dangerous for pedestrians to walk there, not only because of the speeding vehicles and the heavy truck use that they get now, but because there's just no place to get off the road if there's a big vehicle coming through. And I know part of it's county and part of it's city, but I'm wondering if we can figure out some kind of creative, something to slow the traffic down, to allow for better pedestrian safety. It's been suggested maybe a weight limit on that road. Do you think that's possible, Mark?
Well, are we talking about Jamison or Rhodes?
Yes.
Okay. So I've been discussing that with the county engineer. We had requested, when we first started this project, that they consider a weight limit on Rhodes because it's narrow and that difficult curve they have on it. And the county took a wait-and-see attitude on that. They wanted to see what the actual traffic counts were. They actually had counters out again last week, I believe. I didn't make it down there to look, but they had told me they were going to put their two counters out again. We counted them back in November and December after the project was open, and the traffic had roughly doubled at that point. We think it's probably increased a bit more now. I drive it fairly regular, and it's mostly during the peak hours that that's going on. Most of the day, you don't see anybody on the road to speak of. But there is an increase in traffic, and we will have a better figure on that, both on Jamison and on Rhodes here as soon as the county gets us that data, and I can report that back to you. On Rhodes itself, the county does have the ability to do that. They can, they can weight limit that road 10 times. They can do that, and farm vehicles are exempt. But I've heard anecdotally from a couple of the residents over there that there's a fair number of logging trucks that are shorting through there. And so that could be controlled with that. Jamison's more problematic because it truly is an arterial street, and there's no, there's no real justification for a load limit on Jamison.
Right.
So we would have to look at, you know, some other means of doing that, traffic calming and those kind of things. Normally on arterials, you don't put things like the thing we did down at Dunlop in Township, but I suppose it's a possibility to do some of those as well. The PD is aware of it, and, you know, I'm sure they'll have their speed wagon out there at some point. But, you know, enforcement's, you know, the, always the first, first thing to look at on those things.
Oh, yeah. And the Sheriff's Office has got that on their traffic rotation, I guess. I went by there and a deputy was working traffic in there yesterday morning, I think, and we get Dan Eddy in there. I made a list last year. We have 50 locations that, in town, that are regular. I have a traffic problem here. I don't even have Nelson and Wally on there yet, but we have, like I said, 50 locations, and it's timing.
Oh, sure.
The schools, our school before and after, except for when it's not, when somebody sees somebody speeding and then they demand something to be done. So it's, it's a bit problematic, but we can add focus here and there. We just don't have the bodies to do a lot of it, except for the commercial vehicles. And I don't know if Dan's hitting that as much as he can. We'll get him focused out there for the trucks because that's going to be the biggest thing. Rhodes Road has always been narrow. It's always, and some of those peripheral roads like Rhodes and even Jamison before the roundabout came through, they were sneaky places for people that were avoiding us in the downtown area at night. And Highway 20, they would sneak around those roads to get away from us, and we would just arbitrarily go down there. It's hard to justify setting one officer there when they can set in Trail Road and stop 30 cars or sit there for two hours and stop one. I've got some other things to, I've got some crime watchers that can sit in an old patrol car and do some traffic counts. But one funny story is one of the biggest opponents of the roundabout at Jamison, we just stopped him on Jamison the other day for traffic issues, so that was incredibly awesome. But we've, we've got the ability to do that. I've been thinking about getting my crime watchers out. They've been begging for more work and get them out there with a radar gun. They, they keep wondering which end to point at the cars, but we're going to get them educated on it and get them out there. And that'll just kind of double our ability to get cars slowed down, which is what we really want.
Yeah, that'll help a lot. That'll help a lot.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And then maybe?
And the city only owns to 350 feet of that entire roadway, so that's the other challenge for us when you look at resource deployment. But we can certainly be communicating, coordinating with the county in partnership for that corridor, like we've done on Fruitdale and some of the others.
Boy, we have to pull out the creative thinking in this one. I'm, maybe once we get the counts back from the county, can, I don't see any need for the dump trucks and log trucks to take that shortcut. They're just, you know, can't they stay on the main roads?
We'll still menace them, even if they're out in the county, we don't mind.
Yeah, perfect. That's great. Thank you.
Anything else, Brenda?
No, I'm done.
Julia?
So, not to sound like squeak wheel, but there on Talcott and Sixth, where Central School is at, just to make you aware, there's a lot of people who blow through those four-way stops there, especially heading up Talcott, either heading east or west on Talcott. And during the school, of course, that road is, part of it's blocked off, so that's not such an issue. But once that barrier is lifted and that road is viable again, people tend to really blow through it. And being that it's a school zone, and there are children who do play there after school, it's a concern. And then I just wanted to follow up with what Jermaine was saying. So, yeah, so next Thursday on the 18th, go to your favorite place to eat. Here in Seidrawully, we have a lot of businesses that are participating in the Take a Bite Out of Skagit. And actually, it benefits the food, Skagit Food Distribution Center here in Seidrawully. So it's really great. But we have Cascade Pizza and the Bullpens, Swamp Daddy's Barbecue, Liberty Bistro, Little Thailand Restaurant, and the Iron Skillet. So if any of those are your favorite, go in and enjoy on the 18th, and it'll benefit the Skagit Food Distribution Center. That's it.
So the council has had kind of peripheral discussions now for, it seems like, two or three or more years about closing Talcott at Central School to connect the school property there.
I think it's a great idea.
So I guess, at some point, I mean, we have, we have the capacity by simply leaving those gates closed to close it, and then we could look at how to improve that area for recreational purposes over time. But, you know, I don't think we've ever actually asked the council more than just, are you interested in exploring it?
Well, we've actually brought it to Parks Committee, and that's been brought up.
Got quite a few affirmatives and one, one negative. But maybe it's appropriate to actually ask the question more pointedly. Stop signs, you know, is one of the early engineering lessons I got is stop signs placed for the purpose of stopping traffic, not because of flows, but because of speeds, just don't work because people don't respect them. So, you know, those four-way stops are probably not because of traffic demands, they're because we don't want people driving quickly through the neighborhoods and by the schools. And that's the issue, you see, is there's not enough volume to really warrant stopping. So people, they just don't follow the rules. But closing the road would, would obviously change that pattern.
Or another idea, which actually, actually was brought up by Brett, was the idea of a small roundabout, that that would cause, people would have to slow down to go around that roundabout, so.
That interferes with buses.
Yeah, well, that's another issue with the buses. So Talcott, it's probably hard to believe that it's getting more divots in it because it's already a pretty bumpy road. But actually, it is, those buses are developing issues or causing issues with Talcott.
And that was just this year, right? This school year that they shifted that whole pattern to run about eight or 10 buses on Talcott twice a day? I think I noticed it in the last year.
And it gets kind of crazy because such a narrow road that if somebody, and of course, parking is allowed on the south side of the road, but if you have someone who's coming from the east, then, you know, there's no way that a bus and a car can pass on that road. There just isn't. So I didn't understand why they did that, the way that they did that.
Well, we can certainly talk with the school too about the bus pattern, but I guess the bigger question I'm raising is, is it time, does the council want to address the issue of Talcott's potential closure on a more permanent basis?
But, but leave room for his funeral. We'll have the key for the driver of the hearse to come unlock the gate, let him through, and then lock it back up.
That's enough for 25. I like to, you know, I could write that ordinance.
Yes, please. Will you put it in the ordinance?
So in exemption for funeral processions.
Because we have, I mean, we've talked about it in Parks Committee, we brought it up with the school district, you know, I think it's time to have that formal discussion.
I agree.
Chuck?
I am, Brett.
Rick?
Well, Brett and I were talking, we both basically have a lot of the same questions, but I'm going to steal a thunder on one of them. We noticed here that there was a permit request for the 102 Woodworth Building. Just curious as to what Just curious as to what might be going in there? The old interior gardens, flowers on Woodworth? Alcohol?
Yeah, so, a couple of years ago, back in the heyday of the bars downtown, the council put a, well, we changed the zoning to say that any alcohol-serving establishments need to get a conditionally used permit. So, in the central business district. So, somebody wants to open a taproom, which is less like a bar and more, I mean, it's, I mean, strictly defined, it's, you know, alcohol, it's beer and maybe some wine, but it's a little bit more of a mature crowd. They usually have more expensive beers, and so, and close early, so it has a very different dynamic than a bar, I would, I should say. So, they're looking to go into the old flower place, and so, they're, they have to apply for a conditionally used permit. We're getting that rolling, and hopefully, this week, I'll be able to schedule a public hearing for them and get that notice going.
Will you give, do you give, on things like that, the city council a request?
No, because if there's an appeal, it might come to the council.
Dottie, Rick?
Yes.
Brett?
Yeah, I'm with Brenda. I have a few things here.
And you've been out of order also, I'll just remind you of that.
That's okay. Someone asked about the status of the curbs at State and Highway 9. They wanted to know, is the city going to do that or not going to do that?
Yes, we are.
But what, like, what's the timeline, I guess, is what they were, they were looking for?
17th or 19th, what did I say?
The 17th is what we have scheduled. It'll be that week is what we're permitting.
And then, I also had a question about, mostly it refers to Burlington, but all the marijuana signs, like that, especially that new one, you know, sign, 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 but we have that big billboard, and I thought that the liquor control board prohibited signage like that, and wanted to know, in the city limits, can they put up big billboards and signs that say marijuana next 10 blocks or whatever?
Well, I had an educational conversation with the cannabis lieutenant just earlier today, and-
On just this subject?
So, the, the issue is that a lot of us believe that the rule limited signage to two signs affixed to their facility, but the Attorney General's guidance has indicated that they are, in fact, limited to two signs affixed to their facility. Everything else is Sally bars the door, just like any other business, with the exception that their signage can't be kid-friendly, and nor can it be within 1,000 feet of any of the protected entities. So, point of fact, the Floyd's billboard sign has been ordered to be removed by our cannabis enforcement officers, because it's so close to the Winnie Hauser Park and Playfield. The Burlington Pot Shop there has at least one sign located in the public right-of-way, I believe, that will be ordered to be removed.
That kinda tree, isn't there one?
Yeah, that's the highway sign announcing cannabis in 1,500 feet. You know, that, that appears to be very clearly on right-of-way. You're not allowed to have those signs on, on the right-of-way, so it sounds like that one would be eligible for enforcement. And the same goes for, you know, there's spinny signs, there's banner signs, there's three-dimensional mud-like signs, I mean, they got it all down there, and it's confusing. So, the legislature's also weighed in this session, it sounds like, with a bill that would further restrict signage that intended to be, you know, cutesy or targeting a younger audience.
Okay. Lager Rodeo had a meeting the other night, and the replacement value for a statue that burned up is like $4,000, and we were just wondering, how is it not, I know they've come talk to you, but how is it not the responsibility of the building that just burned down, insurance? Do you know? Like, where is it, like?
Well, they don't insure other people's property, so, you know, the protocol appears to be that each, each owner insures their own property against loss, and if there are issues of subrogation, that's handled on the back end. So, I don't believe that, I don't think we schedule any of those carvings, right? Yeah, so, so they're not our, they're not the city's carving, so we don't schedule and insure them, so the question is, does Lager Rodeo insure them? And that may raise the bigger question. I know, for example, in La Conner, when we established a public art program many years ago, it was a loaned art program, and one of the things the town did was agreed to schedule the artist's artwork on insurance to cover them for, from loss. So, city doesn't have coverage for it, it's really up to Lager Rodeo then to have, you know, communicate with its insurance company on, on that statue if it has coverage for those.
Okay. So, it's something to think about, maybe in our umbrella, include statues for-
Well, we'd have to have some sort of arrangement where-
'Cause aren't they donated to the, we donate those to the city.
No, my understanding is Lager Rodeo does not donate them to the city, in fact, retains ownership of them, and has been somewhat particular in years past, when, when, for example, I've asked that they be relocated to various spots. So, you know, we should have that conversation with Dottie about, you know, and the board with what makes sense, you know? In my opinion, if they are intended to be public art, it's not crazy that the city would have some role in, in, you know, helping with those, but there's also costs that go with it, so that conversation's just something we should have. That was also a very hard element to put out, if I recall from that day.
Yeah, that was the last thing burning, right?
That thing burned-
Would not go out.
Forever. I mean, it just kept reigniting all day long.
And then, last, since we're talking about Jamison, we got this letter from a homeowner. We have to remember that we redirected traffic that was on a major arterial state highway, and now it's going through a neighborhood. It doubles, it says, Mark. And so, I mean, if we could put a roundabout on a major highway, we could put traffic calming devices on an arterial, I would think, so it just makes sense to me. But we take care of our neighborhood, these people live here, they're not people passing through. Why do we care about cars passing through the city instead of over, you know, our neighborhood people?
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay, so, down to me, and for public, I should tell you, once I'm done here, we're gonna go into executive for potential litigation under RCW 42.30.110, subparagraph 1i, for about 15 minutes with no expected action. So, first, I'd like to bring the council's attention to page 93 of your packet. Our housing authority has gotten award as a high-performing agency once again, and I think that puts them in the top 10 or 15% of housing authorities in the country. But what's really amazing is, our housing authority has gotten this award every year since 1992. So, that's on our, our board, and also a tribute to the work that King County Housing Authority does with us. It's a unique arrangement, and I'm grateful to our board members and to King County for helping us. Public Works Day was a great success. I was hoping Deborah and Tricia would stick around, 'cause the library played a big role in that, but so did all our public works and our police officers and our trash truck drivers. So, I've got a big packet of thank yous from kids that have the cutest pictures you've ever seen, guys who wanna work for the sewer department and things, so I'll pass that around, and if any of the council wants to read them, you can come get them. They'll be going throughout our departments that participated in that. Remind everybody that National Police Week is 15 May, and then for the week thereafter, if you, if you go to Skagit Breaking, you'll see the people notice our officers. Officer Eddy was personally called out for pulling over a commercial vehicle that did not obey the ambulance going by, so citizens notice when he's doing his job correctly, and I appreciate his work. Tomorrow morning, if you'd like to get up early, I will be the honorary chairperson of our National Pride Breakfast in Skagit County, so if you wanna join me for breakfast at 6:30, I'd love to see you there, and it's a great honor. So, at this time, some 58, we will go into executive for 15 minutes, and there's no action expected. So, we're back at 8:15. Without objection, we'll stand adjourned.